But you can't pray here. Why can't we listen to? Oh, when they're listening. Ask extra questions. Lighting, lighting, lighting. Don't do anything. I don't know. Why, why can't you trust me then?
Yeah.
Got the machine and got this, sat it down here, hoping that could drink out of it. I couldn't figure out why it tasted weird.
Ready? Good evening, everyone. We'll call the December 19, 2011 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call.
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti. We have corn.
Next order of business is an executive session. Tamara, if you could state the purpose.
Mayor, we need one for discussing the qualifications of a prospective public officer employee and consulting with legal counsel about our pending litigation matter.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Brown and a second by Mason to go into executive session for the purposes cited. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this incredible day. And Lord, in these moments of this meeting, I just pray that you'll pour upon your wisdom into everybody making decisions. May everything that gets spoken, everything that's even thought about, everything that's discussed, Lord, may it just glorify you. May this city continue to be a city that makes you proud, that honors you in everything that we do. I pray that you'll impact the world through this city. But Lord, this meeting is yours. We ask that you do what you want to do and give everybody the necessary guidance. We pray this in your wonderful name. Amen.
To the light of the United States of America. And to the holy hands. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Pastor. Next order of business is adoption of the agenda. We have one addition, and that is item 66A. It's Resolution 2011-172, a resolution to waive city landfill charges for trees greater than 24 inches in diameter that are collected and disposed of pursuant to the mountain pine beetle suppression plan. So that's item 66A. We'll also go to Alderman Mason. He's going to discuss item 53. Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I didn't catch this error earlier, and I'd just actually like to extend a thanks to Alderman Laurenti for having the sharp eyes to notice this, along with the tactful memory. But during the committee, Mr. Laurenti moved during legal and finance to continue the introduction, the first reunit of ordinance number 5779, to modify the city's sign code. And that was passed with a three-to-one vote on legal and finance. So probably should not be on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
All right, so item 53 will be removed unless there is objection from the council. Bonnie Peterson. All right. Any additional items? We have the addition of 66A and the removal of 53. Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, I would like to put on the agenda about the Hanukkah lighting ceremony tomorrow.
Item 66B, we'll call it. Hanukkah lighting ceremony. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Davis, second by Nordstrom to approve the agenda, and this with the additions of item 66A, 66B, and the removal of 53. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next order of business is to approve the minutes for December 5. Motion by Mason and second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll now go down front, and if Captain Keith Raymond would join us up front. And council leadership. And Dee, if you want to come up now, too. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Captain Raymond, the Rapid City Fire Department. On Wednesday, November 30, 2011, at 2:20 PM, Engine Company Four responded to a report of a van on fire at the intersection of West Boulevard and St. Anne. On arrival, Captain Raymond reported light fire in the interior and that they were going to attack the fire. As the crew was preparing to extinguish the fire, the van began to move and rolled away from the crew. Captain Raymond, who was standing near the van, made a hasty decision to enter the vehicle in an attempt to get the vehicle stopped. While inside the vehicle, while rolling down the street, the vehicle's interior became fully involved with fire, and Captain Raymond had to bail out. And you can see the brake lights on the van, and he's inside. While he was enveloped in fire, he sustained first and second degree burns to his face and ears. After the incident, Captain Raymond expressed to the fire department's senior staff that his immediate concern was for the safety of the passing motorists and the potential of the vehicle possibly striking a house. During this incident, Captain Raymond set aside his own safety for the safety of our community, and for this bravery, he is being recognized. Thank you, sir, for your service to our community.
Just a couple of comments. Keith stands before us tonight here to be recognized, and we take something like this very, very serious for a couple of reasons. First off, we don't want to oversensitize something like this. We view this as a very, very serious situation that Captain Raymond was faced with. We certainly don't encourage our firefighters to do things like this because ultimately, we don't want them to be injured on the job. Unfortunately, sometimes these guys are put in situations where they do have to, like Captain Raymond did, make a hasty decision whether they act or they don't act. And in this case, Keith made a decision based on the safety of the passing motorists and, of course, the possibility of catching a house on fire. He needed to act and see if he could stop that van from rolling down the hill. Again, we take these very serious. Typically, we look at an incident like this, we call this a near miss, and that there was a potential hazard situation for one of our employees. And in this case, we actually call it probably a hit, in that we had a firefighter sustain some injuries due to his actions that day. So what we do in the department is we take a look at an incident like this, turn it into a training moment, and we broadcast around all the firefighters and all the fire stations, review the incident, and Keith himself actually made recommendations to the other firefighters of how this incident could maybe go different in the future. And there were some different training opportunities that came up, and we had some good discussions about making sure that this doesn't happen in the future. But with that said, I can't certainly speak enough to the decision he made that day and act for bravery that he was faced with that day. And so that, he's being recognized tonight, and so this is definitely one of the city's bravest, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you again, Captain, for your service to our community and our Veteran of the Month for December we will award in January. Now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placing on the agenda by a unanimous vote of the council members present. I did have several speaker request forms for item 53, one had marked that they would like to speak on general public comment. If you'd like to speak, please step forward, otherwise we'll save that discussion for the next meeting. Okay? All right. We are now into non-public hearing items, items 3 through 48 and 50 through 67. We'll first open public comment on items 3 through 48. Can we have a motion, please? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public comment is now open on items 3 through 48. We do not have any public comment on items 3 through 48. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Brown, second by Mason. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. If any items, items 3 through 48, that any council members or staff would like to remove from the agenda, 3 through 48, please speak now. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve items 3 through 48? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson to approve items 3 through 48. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. We're now on public hearing item, item number 49, and we're going to open public comment. Can we have a motion, please? Motion by Mason, second by Peterson to open public comment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do have one speaker request form, and this is from Susan Hughes on item 49. Susan, would you like to speak on this item?
I just wanted to hear if you have questions.
Very good. All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Roberts and a second by Brown to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 49. Alderman Brown, can you please read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Number 49, Resolution Number 2011-143B.A., leveling assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. I move to approve.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval. And we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
This may have been corrected, but was there not a case of missed address on the billing? Was that corrected?
We'll go to Pauline Assumption, our finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The billing address that we use is whatever is on file at the county's office, and that is what we are required to use. I do believe that the address that was actually abated was the correct address throughout the process, but until the address is changed down at the county, then we have to use the one that is there.
Okay. Thank you.
Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm just looking for some clarification, but with this motion, is this also corrected from the legal and finance recommendation to reduce this to the $50 amount as recommended? Just to clarify? Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to get clarified, is at the legal and finance. There was a motion to approve the resolution with the amount of the late fee being reduced to $50. So that should have reduced that, and is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on non-consent items, items 50 through 67. Can we have a motion to open public comment? Motion by Sasso, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 50 through 67. Do we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Roberts, second by Mason. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 50. Jordan Mason.
Item number 50 is second reading ordinance number 5773, supplemental appropriation number seven for 2011, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Davis. We'll go to Pauline Assumption. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that there is a new copy of the ordinance at the dais for each of you. The change between legal and finance and the one that is on the dais is the addition of a supplement to the Humane Society. As we went back to the 2010 minutes, we only increased their budget by 10% instead of the 15% that was approved by the council, so that is just a correction. And just so you know, we will also be having to correct the 2012 budget for that same amount, so I just wanted to point that out.
Motion is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 51, Jordan.
Thank you. Item 51 is second reading ordinance number 5774, an ordinance repealing Chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts in adopting a new revised Chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 52.
Item 52, second reading of ordinance number 5775, an ordinance adding colleges and universities as conditional use in the medium-density residential zoning district by amending Section 17.212.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Jerry Wright?
I believe that's with the amendment, including the fact that it's private.
Is that correct, Brett? Brett Limbaugh?
Yeah, the amended ordinance is attached, and it is for private universities and colleges.
If we could just have a moment, if we could clarify the ordinance. Does not, does not say that. Pull that up real quick.
See, the, go over to the third attached item, go down to item S, underlined.
Okay, it is there. Any further discussion? Bonnie's looking at the title of the ordinance, 5775. Go ahead.
I'm just seeking clarification because we were told at one time that our ordinance, the title, has to match the intention, so I don't know if it does in this case or not, but I'm just seeking clarification.
I believe that it's, it is, it would give people adequate notice, and then if you read down into the body, it clarifies that it's private. So I don't have any problem with the title.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 54.
Item 54 is first reading ordinance number 5776, an ordinance establishing a minimum separation between certain video lottery casinos and residentially-zoned property by adding Section 5.64.030 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I will yield the floor.
Do we have a motion or any discussion? We'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the 500-foot restriction.
We have a motion and a second. There are two ordinances attached. The one that's just been offered as a motion is the 500-foot buffer ordinance. And that was a motion by Sasso and a second by Laurenti. We'll go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess I would just ask that we may want to consider continuing this item to legal and finance, given that we have had a number of business owners contact us within the past 48 hours with their concerns, and I would say that I think it's incumbent upon us to at least be receptive to the issues that may be created by this ordinance and maybe take a little extra time.
We'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would concur. I'm in support of the motion and that, but I've been contacted also by some of the owners in that they would lack of an opportunity to at least address this and state their side of it, so I would be in support of that, too. Alderman Mason.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion and then retain the floor. The motion would be a substitute motion to send this back to legal and finance for the second legal, the second legal and finance in January. The first one is okay, second one probably. So we've got adequate time for the business owners. Charlene, what's the date on the second legal and finance? Would that be like the 16th? What date would that one be? That's fine, then. Let's just go with the first legal and finance in January, January 11th. That'll be adequate time for the business owners to present their time, and if I can get a second, I'll...
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Brown to continue this item to the legal and finance meeting on January 11. And Dave, you stole the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I've supported this from the very beginning, I have one concern that keeps coming up that I can't support, and I'm hoping that the business owners that are listening that have a concern about this will bring some ideas for us before that legal and finance, because I'm not sure that everyone's going to be satisfied with the ideas that we bring forward. The concern that I've got is this, the way it reads right now with any footage, whether it be 100 feet or 1,000 feet, the way it basically reads is that we can't bring another casino into that location if it's inside the buffer. In essence, if we have an insurance agent in town that's successful, they can add on to their building and hire more staff and grow. If we have a car dealership that's successful, they can add on to their lot and buy an extra hundred cars and grow. And a grocery store that can buy more space and have more bread on the shelf. But by state statute, a casino can only have so many machines. If they're successful, by statute, they have to get an additional liquor license and an additional video gaming license. This ordinance would prevent that from happening because they would be within that zone. It bothers me that we've singled out a particular line of business and restricted their trade, and I really struggle with that one. So I'm hoping that we can find a way so that although we will prevent these from being in residential backyards, and I think that's really the intent that we're trying to do, is to protect the public from having casinos in their backyards, I can't support anything that's going to have a restriction of trade like this. So hopefully, we've got something where there's an amendment that allows us to bring a second one in to a similar location or whatever. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page as to why I want to make sure that we have time to really think this thing through. Thank you.
Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, sir. A similar concern to Dave's is mine, in that we're picking a distance, and I don't know what it's based on, other than that the further, the better for the resident, but I don't see the basis for that. And I think there's a problem with, if we allow it in a zoning ordinance, but we're going to set another condition on it for use and review or whatever, that I don't, I don't think we've built the case strong enough to do this. I think that we need to look at our overall zoning, and if we need to maybe look at our we need to maybe look at our process of procedures of where we've zoned this areas prior to, and maybe consider rezoning some areas back where they can't be versus throwing these arbitrary numbers in there. I think we need to look at for a solution versus a Band-Aid fix, and I think that the picking of a distance is arbitrary, unless someone can prove me wrong.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. I think something like this would be helpful for a, for the council, because we frequently get these issues brought to us, and it would help us to have a guideline in which we could use that wouldn't necessarily waver each time. I agree with Alderman Wright that it would be nice to look at, take a whole big zoning picture of, of what we're going to do, but at the same time, I see the complications that Dave is worried about is that you zone in, you know, make changes with existing buildings, you know, it's always complicated. But I do think that Rapid City, we do need to get more serious about our zonings and stick and follow our own rules, because we, we do Band-Aid a lot, and I think we cause problems for ourselves further down the road. I'll support this postponement or pushing it out tonight, but I also want to say, though, that makes me leery, because when private citizens ask us to postpone ordinances for them, we seldom ever do it. And I want to, obviously, meet business needs, but I just want our council to just take a look at this, that this is an example where frequently citizens are not, don't get the same right or privileges as businesses do. So, thank you.
We'll go to Ron Sasso, and please keep your comments of the motion on the floor, which is to continue, if you can.
If I can. I will try. Thank you. I will not be supporting the delay just from, and actually, I think Bonnie kind of touched on that. One of the issues that we have is often, I think, we struggle with those distances, and at the same time, I think it's important that we move forward rather than kicking the can down the road, which a lot of times is a lot less painful if we say, okay, let's deal with this a little later on. And it's still going to come back. Here it is, up on the dais, and because we get a few letters, emails, well, oh, hold on, let's back up. I, I think this is something that we should be able to move forward on tonight. So, thank you.
I'm going to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch a couple of quick points on why I'm asking for an extension, and the first reason why I'm asking for an extension is actually directly opposite, but my logic is because when we have had issues in the past dealing with neighborhoods that have wanted more time to review these things, we have taken the time, so I, I feel that it is proper to also give the business owners the same rights that we've afforded to small neighbors and the neighborhoods. The other thing that has been mentioned that I think is imperative is I don't feel comfortable when we are narrowing or segregating one singular form of business out. It's pretty clear that this, this ordinance is trying to narrow down on one business. Whether I agree with that one business or not is frankly irrelevant. The fact that we've singled them out, out of an entire barrage of industries, makes me feel uncomfortable. What I do think is something to look at that is a concern that is related to this business and many other businesses, is the amount of density and traffic that they bring into neighborhoods, which has been a concern in a number of incidents, in addition to the type of establishment that also is involved in these types of businesses. So, one of the things that I, I guess I would like to at least look at is whether or not the problem that we're trying to solve with this ordinance couldn't be if we aren't actually allowing other businesses that contribute a very similar problem and that we're just not actually missing the target here. I guess what I'd like to look at is, like our other areas of zoning, that we have low, medium, and high density and a gradient, I think it may be imperative to us to take the time to look at, not only with casinos but other establishments, how they fit into a layered or tiered scale for our zoning, and maybe have a discussion of how we have planned our city. But I'll leave that for the future discussion, but I do appreciate taking the time to at least delve into the issue, take a little more time for thought. Thank you.
I just wanted to voice my support for both of the previous amendment and, and the current one sitting on the floor. I, I spoke at this legal and finance meeting, as many of you would know, and what's important to me is that we make sure that with, ultimately with this ordinance, I'm hoping that we will make sure that we aren't stymying any business, because I'm not, if anybody who knows me knows that I'm not, I want very limited government. I hate to have government involved in very, I hate to have them involved just about anything, but the bottom line is, we need to make sure that we're protecting residential areas. And so, we have, I don't think we're limiting these businesses. Anybody can drive around the city of, of Rapid and see that these businesses are not limited. Now, I, you, that can be per somebody's definition, of course. I'm sure the people who own these businesses believe that there's never enough of them, and then the people who hate them believe that one is too many. So, I'm hoping that what we can do, sending this back, I agree with that, and hope that we can make a sensible buffer around the continuing growth of Rapid City, which is imperamont to me, that we protect these areas. And I just want to remind people that it's not just video lottery that we're talking about. It's the alcohol as well that has a great impact on the residents that live around these areas, and so it's, it's not just video lottery, but it's, it's the impact of those places having the alcohol license that are very close to neighborhoods. And those people that live around these businesses, be it a bar, as Alderman Ward brought up, Mason, I should say, sorry, that it, it may encompass more than just lottery, but the bottom line is, is we're not going after lottery. It's, it's where we combine these with alcohol licenses, and we've got to make sure that we're protecting residential areas, and I'm hoping that's what comes out of this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, okay. Motion carries with one no, and this is continued to the January eleven legal and finance meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can you clarify who voted no?
Ron Sasso. Item fifty-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-five is first reading ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-seven, an ordinance to prohibit vehicle operators from parking next to curbs painted yellow by amending section ten point four zero point zero-two-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason and a second by Roberts for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six, Jordan.
Item fifty-six is first reading ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight, an ordinance to add a time for removal of mountain pine beetle-infested trees by adding section twelve point four zero point one zero five to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I will yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Peterson and the second by Sasso to approve item fifty-six, first reading of ordinance fifty-seven seventy-eight. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number fifty-seven, Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-seven is a request by Renter Associates LLC for Hog Wild Incorporated for a preliminary plat for proposed tracks, one and two of Harley-Davidson subdivision, legally located south of the intersection of Tonka Road and Harley Drive, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-eight, Gary?
A request by Renter Associates for a preliminary plat for proposed lots four A and five A, block two of Rushmore Crossing, legally described as being located south of Elgin Street and east of Luna Drive. I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve item fifty-eight with stipulations. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine, Jordan.
Item fifty-nine is approval of community investment and subsidy recommendations from the Allied Arts for ninety-five thousand, and I will yield the floor.
Do we have, Pauline, we'll recognize you. We'll go to our city finance officer, Pauline Sumption. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not able to attend the legal and finance committee meeting, but I realized that there was a bunch of questions regarding this. Deidra Boudal is in the audience, and I thank her for coming. She is with the Allied Arts tonight, and if you have any questions about the process that they took to go through and make the recommendation, she is here to answer any questions. I did also request that, and now I, her name is escaping me, Mary, thank you, Mary Ann Downs, to be here tonight. However, she had another obligation to attend to, so was not able to be here to answer specific questions to the Ranger Band.
We'll go to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Sam, and I would like to ask Ms. Deidra a question. With the Ranger Band, obviously, there's a question about first and foremost, you know, kind of how many performances it's doing, and does that justify, I believe it's ten thousand some odd dollars.
Three hundred.
Ten thousand three hundred dollars. And I guess I'd just kind of like to hear your response and thoughts on that.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
My name is Deidra Boudal. I am the chair of the Allied Arts City Subsidy Disbursement Committee. The Ranger Band is one of the groups that has had a longstanding agreement with the city that they would receive a certain level of funding, and ten thousand dollars is about average for them. That's what they've requested over the last several years, and that's what they've gotten. They do not have, I think they have in their application that they do about five different parades that they march in, only one of which is in Rapid City. The others are in the Black Hills area. After we met with some of the representatives of the council, it was fairly clear to us that, to the committee, I guess I should say, that the city wanted to support activities that were happening in Rapid City, which is reasonable considering it's tax dollars, and the committee felt the same way. However, being that this is a group that has had a longstanding agreement with the city, we didn't really want to rock the boat without the support of the council, because what has happened in the past is we have made our recommendations as far as what the funding levels should be, and somebody who gets a reduced amount will come and complain, and the city will say, oh, okay, you know what, they need to get this amount of money, go back and take it away from somebody else. So, that is why we held that level steady, but I think the committee would be in agreement that ten thousand dollars is a little high for a group that does five performances, only one of which is in Rapid City.
I appreciate that, Ms. Boudal. I, I think, and I obviously can't speak for the council as a whole, but I believe you have my support. Thank you.
We'll go to John Robertson. As we proceed, just so everyone knows, we do have the ability to do what's called dividing, dividing the question. So, if we'd like to divide this one for separate consideration, pull off the Ranger Band and approve the rest, that can be done with or with a, okay, you will in a minute. We'll go to John first. We have, we have a, we have a request, a motion to, or a request to divide the, the question, and we can handle this a couple of different ways. Allied Arts was assigned or delegated, they're, they're paid by the city, or they receive a little bit from the city to manage these funds for us, but the recommendations, the individual recommendations come back to this body for approval. So, Alderman Roberts' motion, which we, let's get a second for it, is to divide, do what's called dividing the question, and that is, we're going to divide the motion into two pieces. We're going to have the, the one for the Ranger Band and then the one for, for the rest. So, if we get a second to his motion to divide the question, then we would, we would split this into two pieces, and we would consider everyone else first and then the Ranger Band. Okay, we have a motion by Robertson, a second by Laurenti. This is simply to divide the question, it's not to approve anything. All we're doing is splitting, splitting this up. Any discussion on the motion to divide the question? I have two lights. Okay, we'll go to, Ron, did you want to speak? No. Dave, Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll, this is going to be germane to dividing the question. And John, you can take this as a friendly amendment if, if possible. I'm not sure. We'll have to see. Basically, my concern is I do not want to divide the question, and if it were to be that we would vote down the Ranger Band, that the Allied Arts would lose that money. For instance, right now, we're voting on ninety-five thousand for Allied Arts. If we divide the question, we put ten thousand of the Ranger Band off on the side, in essence, what we're doing is we're voting, the second side of it is eighty-five thousand for the Allied Arts. I don't want to go there. I want to make sure that we still allocate the ninety-five thousand to the Allied Arts. If we want to discuss whether, what or how much the Ranger Band gets, I'm totally in favor of that, but make sure that at the end of the day, we're voting on ninety-five thousand for Allied Arts, because they were scheduled for a hundred thousand. They took a five thousand dollar cut, a five percent cut. I don't want to see them lose another ten thousand dollars, just because one of the organizations that applies through them may be falling out of favor. So.
I will have to disagree.
Okay. That would be my, the reason to oppose dividing the question. Thank you.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
I would, I would lean towards looking at reducing the amount for Allied Arts by that amount, which I know goes directly against that, I mean, as far as dividing the question. I think that's when we're looking at trying to save money and dividing that money out, knowing that money was being allocated that way. I believe it would make sense to have eighty-five thousand going to Allied Arts and then addressing that separately for the Ranger Band.
Okay. We're going to go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. We have electronic problems over here. I, I want to speak very strongly supporting the Ranger Band. We, as a community, absolutely love it when someone comes to our town and spends money, but God help us when we send someone to someone else's town to spend money. Ladies and gentlemen, the Ranger Band is an ambassador of the city of Rapid City, has been since probably nineteen fifty or sixty, that promotes Rapid City throughout the Black Hills community, whether it's the days of seventy-six, or whether it's the home, or the rodeo in Balfour and Silverworth. How dare us even consider not being part of the Black Hills community? It's something to be proud of. It's just like a concert. It's art, it's culture, it's part of us, it's a signature. For us to fail to do that, we are being nothing but a bad neighbor. And I think for us to cut ten thousand dollars out of our band is ridiculous. We had the Veterans Day Parade here on November eleventh. We had tremendous support from Ellsworth and communities from out, throughout the Black Hills area, a wonderful parade. We have a wonderful Central States Parade where everybody shows up. Why can't we, as a community, participate at the same level of, of those that come to us? I would hang my head in shame if we were to cut ten thousand dollars and not sponsor this band. It'd be unconscionable, irresponsible, and wrong. Period.
Just, so we're on the same page. The motion is to divide the question, not, not divide and conquer, we're just.
I got it, Stan. It's all for one and one for all.
Okay. All right. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Hi, I'd like to make a substitute motion, and that is to guide and authorize Allied Arts to look at what their programming is, not necessarily being driven by that we've always done something historically. And because one of I think, oh, anyway, let me, before I start talking, let me make my motion and see if I can get a second, and then I can continue. continue. Again, substitute motion to guide Allied Arts to look at what, how they would like to spend their money without guidance from this, you know, from us saying that they have to always do it the way they used to do it, that they can look and see how they feel that can best meet the needs of the people through their arts program. So that would be, that would be my motion.
So is that a continuation? Or is that a motion to approve with? Please clarify the motion.
Oh, yeah, I guess it would be a continuation. I don't know how best to, I don't know how best to do it, because I don't want to hold up your other programming, but I'd like to give you the flexibility to, you know, within your committee, to decide, you know, perhaps, as a compromise, perhaps, this only, you know, maybe they can go have three concerts, or to look and see where your money, if it's best spent, where it's spent, so that's.
Your motion is to continue to seek clarification?
Yes.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I have a second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Sasso to continue to seek clarification. You still have the floor, Bonnie, if you want to ask a question.
Okay. Well, what I'm looking at here is that we've already cut their Allied Arts budget, and sure, it's always nice and easy to grab at some program and say, well, let's cut everything by ten thousand, without really looking at consequences like Mr. Wright just pointed out, and Deidra, is that right? Okay. Said that they have ideas, but they're being driven by what traditionally has always been done, or by ordinance, what's been done, so we, they don't really have the freedom to pick and choose what they think would be the best end product for the arts community and for the, for the area. And so I would like to give them, because I know there's some concerns, because I think there's other groups also that perhaps get paid for performances, and whereas maybe there's other groups that everybody does it by volunteer, and, and believe me, I'm not trying to say that someone gets paid isn't worth it, I'm just saying that when we're looking to cut funds, that we need, you know, look at everything, and I think the Allied Arts is, are the people to do that. And so I guess that's what I would like to see, is that we give them the authority to do what they want to do, and not to cut their budget, because keep in mind that it has already been cut, and anyway, so that's what I think we should do. Thank you.
We'll go to John Roberts. John?
Electronic problems tonight. First off, I'm not saying that this probably isn't a wonderful program. I think this is a program that probably should be funded by the private sector. You know, it's so easy for us, as council people, to raise property taxes, but it's hard for us to cut the arts. I just want to say, you know, this is probably a wonderful program, but there's a time where, you know, some taxpayers don't want to fund things like this when their taxes are going up, so, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And we'll go to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Just wanted to comment on some of the things that have been said about this, and also get back to the meat of this, but, you know, frankly, what I find irresponsible and unconscionable is a council, or any governing body, that would not have the audacity, and at least the backbone, to start to review what they do, going back from nineteen fifty to see whether or not it's still relevant today. That's what I find unconscionable. Now, to get back to the issue, I'm also curious if all of these fifty-three employees, as reported, are actually receiving a hundred and three dollars and eleven cents for participating, as is listed as being employees? And I'd like to direct that question to Ms. Deidra Boudal.
Well, and I'm not a representative of the Ranger Band, so based on the application that they provided, they've got fifty-five employees, they pay their payroll to students, it says, is fifty-six hundred dollars, so yes, that's about a hundred and some dollars per person.
I guess my, my concern here also is that I would actually like to know that if we are getting this report, that they're paying the students, I'd like to know that those students are actually receiving the money. Frankly, what I'm getting down to is I'd like to know where our money's going. Instead of just loosely throwing it out there and taking other people's money, which is easy to do, because it's not all of my money, and it's not all of any of our money, it's everyone else's money out there, and it's partly ours, too. But we do, we are in a position that I think that we should start treating it like it's our money, and if this was my money, if there was a program that my father's father's father, grandparents, and going back several generations, had been funding, after a certain point in time of running a family estate, I would probably eventually stop and check and see where my money's going. My opinion, but I like to balance my checkbook. Yield the floor to the rest of my colleagues.
After hearing the discussion, I'd like to make a suggestion that might help move this process forward, and that would be to approve the rest of the balance of this item, and ask the Allied Arts to research the amount for the Ranger Band, and bring forward a recommendation to the next Legal and Finance meeting, because that way, they still hold on to the ten thousand two hundred dollars, or whatever it is, and that, that way, it's not being, the perception isn't that it's being taken away from Allied Arts. It could be reallocated, and if the Allied Arts goes back to, and looks at this, and they could decide that, you know, this organization needs to be cut, or this money needs to be redistributed in its entirety, they could do that. It's my suggestion to try to help move this process along. We'll now go to Jerry Wright.
I find it very consciable with my gray hair and fifty-some years of history in Rapid City to support the Ranger Band, and I think they are ambassadors of the city, and we, as taxpayers, can support it. I guess if there's a groundswell opposition, let's hear it. But also, I think that the committee has done their homework, and has come forth with a recommendation, so I send it back to them. Ladies and gentlemen, let's quit kicking the can. They've done their homework, they came to a recommendation, if you guys want to vote to not fund the Ranger Band, so be it. But I say, let's vote to approve their request, one way or the other, and I suggest we support it in its entirety. That's what we asked them to do, they've done it, let's do our work.
Dave Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And someone who's been in Rapid City even longer than I, if Gary or Jerry want to correct me on this, please help me out, but it's my understanding that up until just a few years ago, every one of these groups came before this body and applied for a grant, and we spent, imagine the time we're spending tonight with Allied Arts with each one of these groups. Right, but it's been, there was a period of time where you didn't.
There, yes, there was a period.
The reason that Allied Arts exists is so that a group of professionals could vet out who the, who, those that need the money, rather than us hearing from forty different groups and trying to weed it down. So, am I, is my history correct? My dates are wrong, Deidra, but is that?
I know Allied Arts has been doing this for at least fifteen years.
Okay. So the period of time is, you are the group of professionals that help us determine how the money gets divvied out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what criteria do you use, Deidra, to determine, in general, who gets what, and in particular, the Ranger Band?
We have an application that is sent out, it's published, so anybody who wants to apply for funding can access it on our website, on Allied Arts website, I guess I should say. They fill it out, we ask for tax returns, we ask for recent financial information, we also ask for a budget for the next period. We ask for information regarding the number of activities that they do during the year, the number of people that they serve, if they're bringing, you know, if it's an event that attracts a big crowd to Rapid City, how many they think are in attendance at the crowd, if they're working with children, or elderly, or minorities. We are trying to gather as much data as we can about what it is they're doing. So we're, we look at their financial request compared to what their actual expenses are, and what, what it looks like their need is. We look to make sure that they are trying to get some sort of support outside of the city, because we don't think that it should be something they rely on continually from year to year. We also look at what kind of assets they have, you know, if they've got a million dollars in the bank, they probably don't need any money from the city of Rapid City. But at the same time, we know that there are several organizations that have longstanding agreements with the city, or an ordinance that governs what they're supposed to be getting and funding, so we try to honor that as best we can, while also giving money to other groups. So that would be part of the reason why the Ranger Band got so much. According to ordinance, this is what they're supposed to be getting, so we're trying to make it so that it follows the rules, I guess, for them.
I may address this to the city attorney, but does the ordinance say that we will support the band, or does it give a dollar amount that will support the band? Guess I was under the impression it said that we would support. Deidra, while she's looking at that, do you get more requests than you have money available to divvy out?
Yes, always.
So you're required to make some decisions that you have to cut some people out of some of their requests?
Yes.
Have you, in this particular one that seems to be raising the question tonight, are you cutting their request any, or are you feeling obligated to put this amount down because you think that's what the ordinance says that we will provide? Because, but, I'll let you answer that, and then I'll.
They actually requested more than what we suggested, but we felt that all of these organizations that are required by ordinance or agreement should at least remain steady, rather than being cut, because we didn't want to cause issue with them coming back to the council and saying, wait a minute, you're required to give us this, this money, and then us having to go back to the drawing board and take it away from somebody else.
So basically, what you're saying, then, is that you don't have it from an ordinance that they're getting a set amount, this is just the history of what they've been getting, that you didn't want to cut that particular organization back?
Correct.
Okay.
And I definitely think that we could find another place for the funds, somebody else that needs it, you know, if this one were reduced.
I'll wait for the answer as far as the ordinance. Thank you very much, Deidra.
We'll go to Pauline Sumption, our Finance Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance does not specify a specific dollar amount. It is attached to the agenda, and it's under Section 2.84. In one spot, it talks about salaries, and it talks about a budget, but I can't find where it says, we will pay for the salaries, just that the salaries have to be approved by the council and the mayor. It doesn't say about operational costs or anything, it just says that these four organizations are established, and a couple of different things, but it's very vague as to what actually the city is paying for in that ordinance, and Tamara can correct me if I'm wrong.
Tamara?
I agree with Pauline's assessment, and it does provide that there's a budget, but it just says they, the director of each unit shall present annually to the designated the mayor a budget for his or her unit for the ensuing year, and that the purchases and expenditures are to be, basically, rerun through the city, I believe, is the way it's set up. Yeah, they're, they'd be handled as expenditure of the city funds, is what they say, so.
Okay. We'll go to Jordan Mason. The motion on the floor is for continuation.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get something clarified, and just so I'm, I'm understanding what's being said here tonight correctly, but Ms. Boudal, it's, it's been mentioned that the Allied Arts Council has made a recommendation, but from what I'm hearing from you, that recommendation is based on the idea that because this ordinance is in place, you feel that you have to fund at this amount. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I also heard that previously, that this has been discussed by previous Allied Arts Council, is that correct as well?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my concern is, is that this has obviously been an issue from the Allied Arts perspective, in wondering whether or not this is a priority, as well as having questions of the amount, which Ms. Boudal has been nice enough to tell us about. I guess that's the only reason that, you know, I guess I don't believe in just doing things the way they've always been done. If we did that in this country, the Civil Rights Action movement would have never taken place, major monumentous movements and progress in this country would have never happened. So obviously, I think that there's some point that you have to review what you've been doing for a long time, and maybe see whether or not it fits the times. But I hope we can continue this, and maybe just take a look at what we are supporting, and again, where our money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to see this be continued, further looked at by the Allied Arts Council. I am one, I'm, I love the arts, I love music, all my kids take piano lessons, you know, I understand this, it's important, and at the same time, when you look at, and I appreciate, Deidra, I appreciate your being so candid, because that is so important, and, and I think that you haven't received good direction from the council, and that many, very much it's been, okay, this is how it's done, well, I guess we'll just kind of keep doing it this way and save us some time, whereas if we give you a lot more leeway and say, really vet these, and use it the best possible way, that makes so much more sense, and, and I think just from the standpoint that, these are tax dollars, these are, these are tax dollars, and this is, we're looking at drainage ditches and roads that aren't being funded, so, but I really do appreciate you being very candid with that, and I think if we can help this process be corrected and steered back on course, that would be a huge step in the right direction.
Come on. Thank you, Mayor. Miss, I always hate this. I was in the original Ranger Band, so that's how old I are. I don't know when this thing got changed. I can well remember Papa Brown being upset he had to buy a cowboy, he had a pair of shafts and a white shirt, for his little son to go out and march in parades. We sure did a lot more than five in the good old days, there probably wasn't as much out there, we only had Central High in those days. But I don't see why, to me, it would make more sense if I was running this like a business, I'd pick up another ten-eight for other things that are here, that are, maybe you're getting more bang for your buck. I would rather see us leave it with the ninety-five. Internally, I think you need to really relook and see what you would do with this money. At some point, I would cut this out of my business real quick. I don't think you're getting the bang for your buck, and hate to say it, but sure ain't like the good old days. We marched in a heck of a lot more, even went out of state, and the only thing that I can remember, if my bald head is right, is that we had support from the schools for bus, and it was that, other than that, the parents were kicking in to get the group going, so, that's just a little history back there. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is for continuation, there are no additional speaker lights. All, Richie Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to call the question.
Are there any objections to calling the question? Okay. All in favor of the motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no, from Alderman Wright. Item's been continued for two weeks.
Excuse me, Mayor?
I, yes.
Mayor, you want to continue that back to Legal and Finance for two weeks, or bring it back here?
I, I think probably a stop off at Legal and Finance would be wise, but who, is that, that's okay? So it's Legal and Finance. Any objection to the council members who voted for that? No? Okay. Item number sixty, Jordan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Ms. Boudal. Item 60 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign city helpline agreement, and I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mason. Do we have a second? Second by Lorenti. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 61, Jordan?
Thank you. Item 61 is to request for direction regarding, regarding appointed positions, assistant city attorneys, assistant finance officer, and city engineer. And I moved to go with the recommendations from the legal and finance, which I believe was to remove these positions.
As appointed.
As appointed positions.
So they would be regular employees?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Mason and a second by Peterson for these employees to be regular employees and no longer appointed and confirmed. Okay? And that would affect assistant city attorneys, assistant finance officer, and city engineer. Any discussion on this? And this would require an ordinance change, so this would be coming back for two readings. Is that correct, Tamara? Yep? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 62, and we'll recognize our public works director, Terry Walter Storff. Gary, will you read 62 into the agenda?
Certainly, Mayor. Number 62 is archerial street safety study draft report.
I believe that this was presented to both committees, so I think we can just acknowledge it.
It was.
Is that correct?
Move to acknowledge.
Second by Brown, second by Davis. To acknowledge, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Somebody get Terry a drink of water.
First item for bid is five 2012 police cars. We received one bid on this from McKee Ford. And recommendation is to award the bid to McKee Ford for a unit price of $30,405 and a total price of $152,025.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts to award. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 64.
64 is for the Rapid City Greenway Trails and Pedestrian Facilities Project. Side note, this has been a work in progress, so we're excited to see this bid actually getting awarded. We received quite a number of bids on this. The recommendation is to award the bid to RCS Construction, Inc. in the amount of $2,232,268.93.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nordstrom to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 65.
65 is for the high nitrate content hay bills. And the recommendation is, as highlighted, we have a number of lots with different bids on that. The total amount from Triple T Ranch would be $13,202. And the total amount from Dan Lewis would be $3,402.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 66. Jordan?
Item 66 is the Yellow Robe Enterprise LLC doing business as Dakota Liquors for 418 Oldwood Drive for, for a package off sale liquor license, and I'll yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? Any motion or discussion? Motion by Peterson, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay. Second by Brown. Motion by Peterson, second by Brown for discussion. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 66A, this is resolution 2011-172. This was, this came out of the incident command meeting this morning that Jerry Wright and I attended. And Jerry, if you could please, this was just put on the agenda today, and so if you could please read this into the record for us.
You want to read the entirety or just?
Just read the entirety and offer a motion if you would.
Thank you. Resolution 2011-172, a resolution to waive city landfill charges for trees greater than 24 inches in diameter that are collected and disposed of pursuant to the mountain pine beetle suppression plan. Whereas the city of Rapid City has declared the mountain pine beetle invasion an emergency and the city of Rapid City adopted a mountain pine beetle suppression plan. And whereas the city's mountain pine beetle suppression plan calls for the removal and destruction of living trees identified as being infested with mountain pine beetle. And whereas the city landfill has established a fee for any tree over 24 inches in diameter, the fee. And whereas admitting or waiving the fee requires council approval pursuant to Rapid City Municipal Code, section 80807, zero dash, excuse me, per N E. And whereas the Rapid City Council deems it is in the city's best interest to waive the fee for the mountain pine beetle infested trees over 24 inches in diameter in order to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the city, now therefore it be resolved by the city of Rapid City at the Rapid City landfill for trees greater than 24 inches in diameter is hereby waived for any and all trees brought to the city landfill via the mountain pine beetle suppression plan. Be it further resolved by the city of Rapid City, the landfill superintendent or his or her designated is required to verify that any and all trees for which the fee waived is requested are being disposed of pursuant to the city's, city of Rapid City's mountain pine beetle suppression plan dated this day of, 19th day of December 2011. I ask for approval by the council of this resolution.
Okay. We have a motion by Wright and a second by Roberts for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 66B, and we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. This is regarding Hanukkah lighting.
Yes. I just wanted to point out to the council and to the citizens that we have a wonderful cultural and educational experience in Rapid City tomorrow night at the Main Street Square, where at 5:30, where you'll be able to participate in lighting of the menorah, which is part of Jewish holidays. And I know, we all know a lot about the stories of Santa Claus and, and Jesus. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to learn more about the Jewish holidays here in our very own city. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to acknowledge the report?
Say aye.
Motion by Roberts, second by Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 67, I believe that the, we need to acknowledge the withdrawal.
Who to acknowledge the withdrawal of?
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Peterson to acknowledge the withdrawal of the appeal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 68 through 77, can we have a motion open public hearing?
Say a move.
Motion by Brown, second by Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A public hearing is now open. We do not have any public comment. So we will keep the hearing open and proceed. Item number 68. Gary Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. 68 is to approve a request by Art and Associates for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water, and sewer and to reduce the width of the access easement from 59 feet to 26 feet as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This is located south of Elgin Street and east of Luna Drive. And I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by...
Roberts.
Roberts? Sorry.
John.
We're a tandem team, here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rest of the items are consent items. We have a motion to approve those items, 69 through 75.
Say a move. Second.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on the non-consent public hearing items, item 76 through 77. Gary?
Number 76, authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of street light conduit and water along Tatanka Road as it abuts tracks two, track two, to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, sewer, and water along Tatanka Road as it abuts track one, to install sewer, water, and street light conduit along Harley Drive, and to install sewer and water along Interstate 90, located at the south intersection of Tatanka Road and Harley Drive. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 77, Gary?
A request by Renner and Associates LLC for hogwall incorporated for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb and gutter, pavement, sidewalk, sewer, water, and street light conduit on Tatanka Road, and to waive the requirement to install sidewalk, sewer, water, and street light conduit for the Harley Drive, and to waive the requirements to install sewer and water on Interstate 90 as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And that's located south of the intersection of Tatanka Road and Harley Drive. And I move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts to approve with stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill list, Pauline?
Bill list is as attached. No additions tonight. So the total amount is $7,777,785.56.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Nordstrom, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Say a move. Second.
By Mason, second by Roberts to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.